Right, we are about to start our, this is the city of Bonny Lakes. It's a town hall, it's a special meeting, and it's a special procedure that we actually are going for. It's not a local city council meeting, it's not a, what we hold every other week, which is called a workshop, where we do have citizen involvement. This is a little bit more informal, however, we still have a procedure that we have to go through. And first thing that I want to get across is, according to our municipal code, specifically Bonny Lake Municipal Code 2.04.080, we are supposed to stop at nine o'clock. So we're going to try to make this as efficient as possible. We do have an exception to that, to where if we are in a robust conversation at the time, a majority of the council can vote to extend beyond that. But hopefully, we'll be able to get through all of our issues before nine o'clock. And, but first, we're going to start with roll call. Matt Clark, could you call roll, please?
Mayor McCullough.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fulton.
Here.
Councilmember McLeimman.
Here.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
And Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Okay, now that that has started, we would be, we'll start with council open discussion, however, with all of the issues that we have on our plate tonight, by majority of the council, we can, we can go beyond the council open discussion and start with our discussion that we expect, which would be the boat launch. Do we have a, do we have a forum on that?
I'm moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so, let's go to the, the element of the room. The boat launch is what we're going to be starting with. This is a little bit different. With this particular action item, citizens will have five minutes to speak on this. When we get to the other town hall items, citizens will have 10 minutes to speak. But for this particular item, we're going to call for a citizenree to have five minutes to speak. So would, anybody who wishes to approach the dimes and start? Okay. Oh, and if you could please say your name and your address for the record, you'll have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Becca Adams, 9111, One Meeting, Ninth Avenue, 14. I'm here to ask you to reconsider closing the boat launch at Allen York Park for the 2022 season. The residents of Bonny Lake were failed by the city for taking away any and all trailer parking without having an interim solution in place before making a decision to move forward on the new sports field. You should be reminded, when Allen York Phase One improvements were approved in 2017 by city council, it was reported that, and I quote, "Ball Field is expected to be installed where the current boat trailer parking is currently lives, it could affect parking, but the problem will be mitigated by creating a new gravel lot nearby." The new parking lot in the east park was planned to have 97 stalls or enough space for 48 boat trailers and their vehicles. That was in the Courier Herald, January 25, 17. I'd like the city to move forward with that proposed new gravel lot or repurpose Ball Field Four, have an interim solution. Repurposing Ball Field Four is an easy way to keep the boat launch open for all residents and guests at Lake Taps regardless of where they live and proximity to the park. With three trailer spots, there wouldn't be a need to monitor or regulate trailer parking since there are little spots in the old lot that the city already designated to be self-managed. If there's still concern in space, I would recommend only opening this parking up to city residents with the annual mask. I believe this option is more equitable for all, does not block voters for the season, it still allows individuals to access the park, but only for the park at Lake Taps provided by the city of Bonny Lake. In addition to the reduction of some of the regular parking for the park, it would encourage more carpooling and help reduce some of that overcrowding at the park, which are both beneficial for the environment. This needs to be created now because you cannot promise the boat launch will only be closed for years. This project's already taken more than five years since its inception to get started in Phase One. Finding a solution for voters this season also mitigates the impact to the North Taps Park. That park is often at full capacity by noon on most summer days. Without the additional traffic that would be redirected, Allen York does not open. In addition, the cost that residents of Bonny Lake would pay to launch for the season at North Taps compared to the pass at Allen York is well over a $500 increase from a $30 pass been here to $150 assuming 10 launches, and been going up from there. The residents of Bonny Lake should not be penalized for the city council's decision to move forward with construction on the sports field without having a solution for the impact of parking. I'd like to see the city consider the impact to all users of the lake, not just the park or the people that live close enough to be able to leverage not having used trailer parking or accessibility of living on the lake. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else who would be good to the order?
Before I get started, I'd like to make a point of order. I would like to make sure that everyone says it. We're swimming. Dan Decker with 173 East, Pasco. And I am part of the group that caused Mariotti property to become part of Allen York Park many years ago. Would you have, were your council members still on that or that were on the council back when? Being part of Allen York. Thank you for your hard work, I appreciate that. But the thing here is, boat parking, boat launch, what are we going to do about it? My understanding is satisfactory so far. That is a possibility that we're going to use Ball Park Number Four and a couple other areas for boat launch parking, and until the Mariotti property is finished with the construction that's going on, I hope that's true. But also very important is that, where's the money coming from for this boat launch parking on the Mariotti? Where's the money coming from for the construction work? And I'm going to say, a lot of that money is coming from utilities. I would like to know, what is the minimum cost for utilities to city of Bonny Lake? They have absolutely no usage whatsoever is used for particular utilities on that property. That'd be the water sewer, volume metric. By the way, volume metric is double dipping. Volume metric is double dipping, since we're already paying, paying twice for that. Paying for sewer, pipe, and for water going through it, and we're paying for water coming into our house. So we have a problem there, a real big problem. Thank you, past council member David King for bringing that to the people many years ago. Just needed to say his name. But anyway, the point is, I think what you're planning to do is very important and probably work. If you are going to do it, is give each county, each person, a city that owns a boat, and they come in and get a permit for using the boat launch, particular code. I would say that each individual person should have their own code so that we know what kind of violations each individual is performing with that. Violation would be giving it to their cousin, their brother, their uncle, the guy next door, and anybody that comes along. Very important because we don't need that kind of thing happening. I know it will. Anyway, council, council, thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate all of you very much. Thank you.
Decker, anybody else who would be good to the order on this particular session about the boat launch?
My name is Seth. I'm from West Taps, Heavy Heath. Here tonight to talk about the boat. As a new resident, I moved up in this area. One of the selling points for my house was that there is no H.A. So I don't have a private boat launch to use, but I lived at Allen York. I was a garbage man in Bonny Lake for 10 years. And I always seen it as an asset that I could use to launch my boat. I never considered that there would be no boat parking. I don't need boat parking. I understand that Field Four is a great idea, but even if you don't approve parking or don't find parking, to consider the boat launch to be closed for the entire season seems crazy. So that's not all I had to add.
All right, thanks, Seth. Do we have anybody else who would be good to the order? Okay, well, this is an action item, so we can start with open discussion from the council. Okay. Deputy Mayor. I'm never sure how this is going. I just have some questions in regards to currently what is going on. We were having a coffee with the council deal Saturday, and it was brought up that the boat launch is currently closed. But I, I know when we worked here before, we ended up tableling this. Is the boat launch currently closed, I guess, and what's the, what's the status on that right now? Or is that just waiting on this? It's waiting. That's right. So the other thing I had heard was there was the lock issue, digital lock we can give to, what we call the pass or whatnot. And so I, I guess, I guess I just want to know, I guess, is that, is everybody cool with that working? And then on the, basically on just the hot days, or how's, how is this going to work going forward? I think there've been some discussions, we had our discussion. Who wants to address that? Chief, you've kind of had a topic that you talked about, or subject.
Yeah, I can address that. The thought process would be to allow boat launch to city residents as long as there doesn't require trailer parking. They would purchase a permit, and they would be given a code that they could use to launch their, their boat, and it would be year-round. It wouldn't be just on hot days, they could launch whenever they want with that same pass. Just they would be given the code.
Okay, perfect. And then just for the good of the order as well, in regard, I, Ball Field Four has been brought up a couple of times. We had discussed that before, but I think that was something that was going to have to be in the future because time restrictions or whatnot, and getting that done. If you, Brian, maybe you could address that?
Sure. A couple, a couple different items there. The Field Four Parking Lot, just for clarity, we would reference the Field Four Parking Lot and Field Four itself. Field Four Parking Lot ideally should have some work done to it in order to support being reused for limited boat parking. The field itself and the idea that we change that to a parking lot, construct a project that would build a parking lot, is currently an unbudgeted effort that we've initially estimated, if we just put it down in Rock or somewhere in the neighborhood, about $100,000 to complete. It does also mean, in addition to doing that, that we're doing some work to make sure that there's access that's able to accommodate boat trailers getting, you know, trucks and boat trailers getting back there. But again, that's, that is a larger effort, it'll take a little bit.
Okay, Councilmember Fulton.
So with Ball Park Four, that would take probably, that would be ready for next year, but it would not be ready for this year, correct? If we were going to make it to be a, a parking for, for boats?
To change the, the field itself to a parking lot, that would be ready for this season now?
Right. And then, and we're also, are we possibly looking at the teardown of the old courthouse and some of the old public works buildings around the senior center so that we can use that for boat parking as well?
So certainly, that's a question probably for the council to entertain, whether they want to move forward with demolishing those buildings after Public Works is out of there. Again, that's at this time an unbudgeted expense, and ultimately, the plan according to the Allen York Park master plan is that that area would be, minus the senior center that would remain, would be converted to parking. That is a fairly large project, given that not only do you have the demo, but you have a lot of grade separations that go throughout that area that can be cleared and leveled and, you know, there'd be a large effort there. But yeah, ideally, that, that is something that has been slated on parking.
And Councilmember Evans?
I just want to say, I could support Chief Jeter's, sorry, I've been there too long. I could support Chief Jeter on that. And then I would suggest that the, for, for next year at least, because the one thing about changing the, the parking right now to boat parking at Ball Field Four, not the field itself, but the parking, is you're just placing 80 cars for 30 boats. Once we get the, the phasing done at the Ball Field, the, the new field, that's 120, we can transfer that 100, for that 80 to 120, and we still have a net gain of parking stalls, and then we can convert that over for, for pretty minimal money, move some blocks and stuff, change that, re, re, re-strive and resurface, change that into boat parking, and we should be able to do that by next year. And I would suggest anything else as far as the rest coming forward as a decision card for us to consider for our next budget cycle. But with the, with the concept of at least the cost of doing this for next year being included in that for, for Ball Field Four. So next year, at least having those 30 stalls and then looking at what the rest may, you know, the council will get a vote on demolishing Ball Field Four and/or Public Works Center as it sits today, and that's all future stuff. But I think at least this year, we can keep the launch open as long as the residents have local parking and have boat parking, trailer parking next year for at least 30 stalls where Ball Field Four parking currently is.
Okay, for any, oh, Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, one of the things that we had talked about with somebody, a resident that had talked to us during our coffee session, if you will, he had mentioned some ideas that I just wanted to throw out there. I, I don't know the feasibility of propositions he was making, but one of the complaints that he was saying is that he wasn't, he didn't understand why the boat launch was currently closed. And we know it's not peak season yet, the voting season is not open, but he's an official man that is, he's confused as to why it's closed right now before, you know, he wants to be able to still go, and, and I know that it is currently closed, and maybe it was because there was, you know, we were still making decisions in regards to it. But, so I guess my question would be, will we be able to open up the boat launch at least now, prior to the voting season, because the water level is where it needs to be? And then the other part is, John and I were kind of talking back and forth about some ideas in regards to Pierce County, because yeah, as you stated, the, the passes are more, right? They're, they're, they sound significantly more expensive. And so I'm just wondering if there's an interim time where the passes that people would purchase through us could be honored price-wise? I know that that would obviously be a cut for Pierce County, but I just wonder if that's a possibility. He had also mentioned, and again, I, I don't know, I don't fish, so I don't really know. I don't. But Monday through Thursday, he was proposing, he said that during the summertime, he feels like, whether it's Monday through Thursday, Monday through, that there's just a period of stagnation, where there really isn't people there. And he said, those are the times when he would want to access it anyway. So he had proposed that we open it Monday through Wednesday, or Monday through Thursday during the boat, the peak voting season, because I, I think his main comment that he was saying is he feels like, he, he wants to know that we're trying something and considering something. And so, I don't know, those were his thoughts, I felt like they were valid, and so I don't know what everybody's thoughts are on that, but that's what he said.
And just a point of clarity, Councilmember Baldwin, you mentioned the name John, are you referring to our city?
Oh, yeah, 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 John. Sorry.
And, and remember, uh...
I'm not encouraging. [laughter]
Has varied in the past, there's been years where it's been as long as Memorial Day, I believe our website has.
Oh, okay. That should be now.
Do we have any further comment from the council? Okay, yeah, Councilmember Swatman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members, for allowing the discussion to come to this particular forum here, because as known, I completely agree that we should try to maximize the ability of the citizens to use the public resource of that lake, huge lake out there. I would hate to see it cut off for a full year, and I'm very excited to find out if staff has actually proposed some interesting solutions to this. So as my previous comments were, I think we need to let staff do staff stuff, and if staff finds out, there's days that they need to close the lake, they need to close the lake, they're in charge of safety and everything like that, we need to stand behind them and say, okay, that's what it's going to be. You know, if it doesn't work, or if they need to change stuff, they need to change type of, how they issue locks or permits or whatever they need to do, you know? I think we need to let them do that. That really is important. And as referenced, the interesting individual I really enjoyed talking to on Saturday, a citizen that was fishing, that I can't understand how, that they just wanted to launch their boat, didn't want to park it, but that's kind of their interesting scenario. He did mention that it would be nice if, when they signed up for their boat pass, if we do do that, that there's an email list, that we get their emails for that, so that we could actually, you know, email them if necessary of a projected closing, a closing of the lake, because there may be operational times when we had to close the lake, and we could send them an email and say, hey, we're thinking about closing it this Saturday because, whatever, you know, just a heads up. And he was a, you know, a really nice resident, really didn't mind, you know, he just needed a little, a little bit of heads up type of thing, so, you know, he understood there's a difficult situation down there, and hopefully, again, I, it sounds like there will be some creative solutions, and I think we need to, you know, support some creative solutions, rather than just simply, you know, blocking it off and walking away from it. Hopefully, we'll allow them to find some use for what that is.
Thank you, Councilmember Swatman. Okay, we do have Councilmember Watson, and I understand that Councilmember McLeimman wants to address the council too, so how about we start with Councilmember Watson and then Councilmember McLeimman? You will, you'll finish up the panel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, excuse me, because I've, I've always talked about boat launching scale, but it's a, it's part of the systems of Bonny Lake. We do close in the winter, as you mentioned, because of water level due for it. It's also not closed a little longer because we usually wait till we at least boat out in the launching area in case there's an accident, without that boat being out, they really have any quick access to the lake or a problem might happen. They should be open through the summer, except for Wednesdays, when we have our council apart. We should issue next to the Bonny Lake citizens, allow them, like you suggested, have some type of pass key or whatever, then they get through the lock. There are things that are going to happen, people getting through there if they want to, always happens with people. We have a limited parking area right now in Ball Park Four, which is some parking, the rest people can put their boats at their house, their, towards their house, go back and use, enjoy their boat. By next year, we'll have it figured out, and we'll have more room in the, the old ball park, we'll have more area over in the public works there too. And there was one comment about, since not finishing the new ballpark, it's required to be done by October. So unless there's some problem with the contractor, that part will be done by October sometime, unless there are issues, like we've seen in the public works, and that, that will be delayed by the council. So I fully support us emailing up for required for maintenance or whatever might have, and have it open to citizens to use that area, and have the passing access, such as Chief suggested.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Watson. Okay, Councilmember McLeimman?
I'd like to thank Chief Jeter for an excellent solution to the problem. I could, I could, I could endorse that solution as well.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Evans?
Just to make a point of clarification, you mentioned parking at Ball Field Four this year.
Parking lot?
No.
No, that's not on the table this year.
We're going to leave that open for...
For cars.
Cars.
Not so parking. That would be next year. This year would be residents taking back to friends or family that live nearby, parking off-site.
So the cars that park the trailer, are you going to have them towed then?
That will be on the permit, right?
I just wanted to clarify how we're doing it. It's not configured for boat trailer parking, and you don't want to mix boat trailer and vehicle parking. I remember this short before I got here, we had a boat trailer towed car down Bonny Lake Boulevard because of a similar situation. So we don't want a mix, it either has to be boat trailer or vehicle parking. There isn't enough room in there to do both. So that's why this year, there wouldn't be any. But I know that Ryan, I don't know that he could even get it done in time to accommodate those 30, as, as Councilmember Evans said, it would then push 80 cars out into the surrounding neighborhood. Just adding that, there are some capital improvements that need to be created.
Okay, sounds good. All right, and before, and before we move on, I, I do have two questions, two of our people. My first question is directed to Mr. Johnson. The, this is going towards the la, the latter part of this plan, where we would be raising the Public Works Center as it is and everything, is, do we have some environmentally protected land or sea boat requirements that we'd have to go through before we would be able to start on the, on, on the parking lot that, which is one of the reasons why it has to be a little bit farther in the future?
Yes, sea would be required, going through that process would be required for the construction of any parking lot on that site. As far as existing sensitive areas, the, the tree area between the Public Works Center and Field Four Parking Lot, a lot of that is, is subsized as critical areas, so we wouldn't be able to do anything.
Would that be wetlands, or just the...
We just...
And, Chief Jeter, by the way, I agree, it's a wonderful plan that I believe that is before the council tonight. What I was wondering about was the budgeting that we would have through that. Was any, was any research put into how much it would cost to actually, I put into, to what we would be adding the digital code for a resident, for, for Dino?
It's the cost of a cable and a pack lock.
Oh, I don't...
I know it's not a great solution, but it teaches something where we allow our citizens don't have any boat trailer.
Right, right on being illegal. So I don't need to ask for that, or, or for funds or anything? Okay. Mr. Mayor? Oh, yes, a question of Watson, you can change that on the fly, the code?
Yes.
That email list.
Yeah. So that email list will be essential if he finds that being passed around on Facebook or something, because this will change the code, you'll try and control it. Okay. Well, now that'll leave, oh, Councilmember Baldwin?
So I also had another suggestion, which isn't necessarily the most popular, but there is a possibility that we can use a field behind Target and allow boat parking there, but then we would have to arrange to, people would have to arrange to have, be driven two miles back to the boat launch, or maybe access Uber from Target, you know, as a ping, you know, like, I'm in the Target parking lot, come pick me up and take me to the boat launch. So that's also a possibility that we have open, possibly, to be able to park in a, in a, for people who aren't necessarily having a place to park, like, if, if we do decide to open Boat Launch to outside people that don't have a permit, like normally, then we could offer two-mile-away parking, because there is zero parking at, yes.
Councilmember, point of clarification, you keep saying "we" as a city, but that is private property, and we cannot provide transportation, so that is...
No, no.
I don't want people just start parking behind Target with their trailers right now.
No, they would have to make their own arrangements, but they could at least, if the boat launch was open, public other than Bonny Lake citizens, at some point, then there is an option, parking boat, boat trailers.
That they would have to pursue on their own?
Yes.
Independent of, I just want to put that out here. I don't want, I don't want to show up one day and, and four lists, and they're going, why are they parked here in my, you know, yard without permission?
No.
Because it's, you know, there's logistics...
Yeah, we talked to them.
In and out of 14.
And as a point of clarity, are you referring to Kelly Barnes or...
Across the street. Across the street from Kelly Barnes, right? Right, right behind Target.
I see, egress and ingress.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Baldwin?
I, I know we're kind of, you know, talking in some circles and stuff, and so I'm just trying to figure out, what are kind of the definitives that are going to be happening? Like, for example, I do want to know if it is a possibility to email the, the people that do get boat pa, is that a possibility?
Yeah.
Okay, so emails collected, and then they could be up... Okay, so emails collected, and then they could be updated, you know, on things and things. Okay, that's...
I believe there's more probability.
Yeah, that's great. Okay. The other question I had is, and we were talking about public safety, but when we were up decisions there, I know that we had proposed a potential for gravel or paved lot in the ball field four lot and the field. And so I guess my question then is, are there funds, I just don't want to say like, oh yeah, like throw around an idea, like, oh, let's like, let's think about doing this, and then it doesn't come to fruition. And so I just, is there, is there a plan in place for that? Like, what would be the next steps, I guess, of happening with that?
Councilmember.
And money even, is that it's ARCA funds?
So we're going into a budget cycle for twenty...
A biennial?
For twenty-three, twenty-four, for a new one.
Okay.
So what is currently budgeted for things rolled over traditionally, and then the staff comes forward with what's called a budget card, or a decision card. And they present their ideas for, you know, if Ryan needed new equipment that wasn't budgeted, if Chief needed new police vehicles, things like that, this would come forward as that. But that would be my suggestion, is that this comes forward as that with a proposed cost, and then the council will vote on that.
In December?
Yeah, in December or November, yeah, after that, so.
Okay. And then, as far as the boat parking, or, I'm sorry, the boat launch right now, are we then, are we going to open it right now?
Well, that's when we're about to vote.
Okay, that's great. And then, what about, did you hear anything back from Pierce County?
I didn't have a chance to get a hold of him.
Okay, did you just like turn and ask him?
We can put, Councilmember Barnes.
Yeah, I just don't know if that's a possibility, but, you know.
Well, we are about to move forth to vote. I do, is there a motion that we vote on this action?
I make a motion.
Okay, so get a second.
You can make a point of clarification on what the motion is.
Yes.
All right. If you wouldn't mind receding yours?
Okay.
Your second?
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we leave Allen York open to citizens that purchase a annual boat pass, sign up for an email list that would give them a code, and that email list, as well as the terms of the parking pass, would say that there is no boat trailer parking on Allen York premise, and if you do have a vehicle that you launch, you take it to a friend or family nearby. And then we look forward to a budget decision card for twenty-three, twenty-four for the ballpark.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion? Okay, I believe now we can go to a vote. All in favor of Councilmember Evans' motion, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Climmins, did you vote?
Point of order, I would like to discuss that motion. I'd like to make, like to make an amendment to the motion, that we not specify an email list, but a contact list, so that whether it's SMS messaging or email, that that would be an effective way to communicate.
Okay, is that approved by the council? All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Can we do that, by text messaging?
Well, he just said contact list, that was his suggestion.
Okay, so with that amendment, Councilmember Climmins, are you voting yes on the motion?
Yes.
So I believe the motion has been approved by our council. The council, the boat launch will remain open, with the conditions that Councilmember Evans has set forth, and we will get that on our website as soon as possible. All right. Now, we can move on to the town hall part of our meeting, President comments, and I will read this, very repeating. This is your time to discuss city business with the council. Each person who comes up will have ten minutes, unless the council decides otherwise based upon the subject matter. In other words, we get off topic on that. No decisions will be made tonight on any discussion items. They will be either planned for a meeting or a workshop to be further discussed. All agenda topics or additional discussion items that are brought forward may not be discussed pending on time. In other words, we may not be able to get everything. Okay, I believe we do have a couple of discussion items that were submitted prior to tonight, and we will start with those. So Madam clerk, could you read the first discussion item?
Our first resident discussion item is on amendment Bonnie Lake Municipal Code fifteen point sixteen point zero point seven for group R. I believe we do have someone here to speak on that.
My name is Jake Box. I live here in Bonnie Lake. Address is one eight eight zero two ninety-first Street Court East, Dale. So the reason for my request for to come here tonight wasn't really so much to amend the code, as to just kind of common conservation that we have locally with the process of preventing fire sprinkler systems in single family homes.
AV qualified, now we got to do this? Don't think you're going to get out of class today.
Thank you, Rhodey Evans. So I prepared it all, prepared it all for everybody, so going to kind of use this as my guide and have a nice... Basically, the, I numbered the pages, page three is the actual municipal code. This was adopted by City Council to sprinkle all the single family homes in the... That's great. I think that's a great idea. I also own a business. My business is Glacier Fire Protection, and we started in June fifteenth of two thousand seventeen. We work basically all the way up to Bellingtown, and as far south as Tomwater. So we've covered all our ground. We are a level three fire sprinkler company, which means we're registered with the Washington State Patrol as a, we can do commercial, underground, single family residents, mixed use apartments, et cetera. A little boring, but stay with me. Where I have a hangup is the handout that was kind of developed, I think, back in two thousand fourteen, and somehow it was carried, it's a four-page handout, and you guys will see that on pages five through eight. So my first issue, and the problem I have, is the part that's highlighted here. And it says, "Multi-purpose fire sprinkler systems shall be installed in all new one and two family residences, Bonnie Lake Municipal Code fifteen sixteen one oh, or dot oh zero, zero one seven. And standalone sprinkler systems are not allowed in new construction." I don't expect everybody to know what that means, but there's a difference between standalone fire sprinkler system and the passive purge or flow-through system. And I don't really want to go down that rabbit hole as much tonight with you guys, because I'm limited on my time. But nowhere in the municipal code does it reference the standalone fire sprinklers not allowed. And this is one of the issues I had on the house that I submitted for, and you will see that on plan, right there on Church Lake Drive East, page eleven and thirteen. That's a plan that we submitted, Glacier Fire Protection submitted to the city of Bonnie Lake. And this is actually a revised plan that was submitted to the city of Bonnie Lake as a standalone fire sprinkler. There was some back and forth with a fellow that's in charge of reviewing the plans and issuing permits. There was a little bit of exchange. The problem was, on this particular house, you know, flow-through systems, you know, if people want a flow-through system, let them have a flow-through system. They want to select a standalone fire sprinkler system, let them pick a standalone fire sprinkler system. This particular house on Church Lake Drive, there was no way I could get the adequate coverage with all the different types of fire sprinklers. And that goes into a bunch of codes and stuff. But either way, there just, there wasn't a head that was listed as low lead. When you have, when you have a flow-through system, it minimizes the need for a backflow, okay? And that's great, if you can make it work. I'm not saying one way is right or the other. I myself prefer standalone. So this, this house was rejected, it went back and forth, and then finally, I got a response back, and this is an email that I got back, and I didn't put the whole thing in here, I just kind of put, Mr. Jesus, from Bonnie Lake.
Page nine?
Yep, page nine. And my biggest thing is, you know, what got us in trouble here, and, you know, I've done a few houses here, two flow-through systems, and for passive purge or whatever you want to call them, don't require a backflow, because this, in this handout, that we had to do it that way. Finally, I just got tired of it, and I kind of shot off an email and said, hey, now prove it, you know. I challenged it. He came back and said, you're right, basically, that if you do a backflow, whatever, you got to get a permit and all this, no different than any other. Problem is, this shouldn't have ever been, this handout should have never been developed. Handouts actually cost the city of Bonnie Lake residents a ton of money. And I think someone mentioned all this money that was developed to build this ballpark, whatever, last topic we were talking about. One of my customers and neighbors here in Bonnie Lake, he's going to speak after me, Mr. Jeff Hoff, about his house and his experience with this handout. I did include like a cut sheet of a backflow, simple backflow. If you have a standalone system, you don't want that water coming back into this extracted water, separate that. They do require it to be tested on an annual basis. Now, if you go to page nineteen, that is a cut out, a cut sheet of the town hall hire. You do a ton of these all over the state, probably maybe six to eight of these, maybe more than six now a month. They're three hundred fifty gallon tank, they're made in a way that fits through a door. I had to kind of draw on here, you see the little green circle on the tank? Look, kind of like the backside of your toilet. I drew a blue line at the top of the tank, because that's the level of the water. And number two, you see the arrow, that's the overflow. So if this, this flow ever decided to quit working, the water's going to go out the overflow out the back. Now, the fill is at the top of the tank, so you get about a six to eight inch gap, air gap there. So that negates the need for a backflow. Moving on, page twenty-one. This is a, this is, there's other jurisdictions that have requirements above and beyond thirteen D, Bonnie Lake's, I also voted on. They voted, this code, in my opinion, is a waste, not required for code. And just to show you guys, NFPA thirteen D, I bought this in a hurry, it's maybe not even a quarter inch thick, okay? This is, this is the code that was developed back in nineteen seventy-five, voted on in Chicago by the National Fire Protection Association. NFPA has been around since eighteen hundreds, I'm not sure the exact date, but this is, this is what they do. I mean, their job is to save lives, home and property, all that stuff. And one thing that, that I don't think we ought to be doing is trying to make people do things above and beyond code. For thirteen D, it's not required to have a flow switch and a bell, and then another additional bell inside the home, or you have a smoke alarm. Smoke alarm is going to sound when there's smoke, right? So I think I hit on the topics, but I would like to have Jeff speak on his experience. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Box, that was an excellent...
I love the handout, dude. Excellent handout.
You know, I could donate this book. Well, if it's in nineteenth century language, I...
May I ask one other question?
Oh, yeah.
I'm trying to watch a YouTube video right now on just the difference between a standalone and a multi-purpose. Could you break that down real simple? Is it just the rest of our tank that?
No, so, okay, the difference between a standalone, standalone fire sprinkler, is designated as a, as a fire sprinkler system all on itself. Okay, standalone fire sprinkler system. If you have a backflow installed on your fire sprinkler system, on your standalone fire sprinkler system, it'd be considered standalone, because you're not connected to toilets and all this, it's not a plumber system, not a fire sprinkler better. I went to school for five years, learned this trick. Now, a flow-through system is, in my world, more than a plumber system, right? And, and so plumbers are installing these flow-throughs today. But the idea of a flow-through system is to negate the need for a backflow. It's a great idea, but it doesn't always work. Like I said, there's different fire sprinkler heads, you have different heads in here. These are all pendant style heads. Well, I had to protect this house on Church Lake Drive East that has a peak outside, and so they have natural gas going out there, and had to get a head out to protect that back porch. Well, in order to get above the cold space, and in the cold space, to get up to the right current tissue where that head should be, we had to go through the cold space. And there's, they don't make a head that's listed for low lead, and that's another thing with the flow-through or passive purge or any of that, they have to do this. It's part of the drinking water, dedicated fire sprinkler system. Now, with the tank and pump, those are, mostly where we use those is on for folks that have wells, because your two must remote heads require twenty-six gallons per minute. And that pump and tank and that system would do that. But it's considered a standalone system with that tank and pump here, for folks that don't have the water pressure, like Jeff, you know, on top of these apartments up here, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Councilmember Watson?
Thank you. I see a lot of his points are very good points, and this is, they, when they first went into this program, never hear, so as you know that, and we need to revisit this one year, and I would like to see us bring this back. Only a few gentlemen have to say, but I think this whole thing should go back to CDC, make appropriate changes, like, just talk about that makes sense with what we're doing, or the regulation he has there, then bring it back to council for approvals, like, the schedule.
Well, I believe, yes, I agree. We don't know about these, bring it to our attention. I believe that it matters.
Appreciate it very much.
You know, one last thing, you know, I am, I'm passionate about Bonnie Lake, because I've been here. Montana, two thousand sixteen, a few years since. I started my business, I've been in this industry for over twenty years, and I'd be more than happy to help. If they want to create a handout, you know, it needs to be, it needs to make sense. This whole handout that they currently have needs to be thrown in the trash.
I'm more challenged.
I'm more than, I'm more than welcome to give my time for free, help. Well, thank you, Mr. Box, I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Hoff, did you wish you a break?
Jeff Hoff nine one...
Oh, please.
Jeff Hoff nine one two eight, or maybe nine one...
Uh, Jeff Huff, 9128, or maybe 971. Um, I recently built a house up here next to the house that I've lived in for 13 years. And Jake did the design, this engineer designed it. And I'm, the city, the city said that we had 40 pounds of water pressure, which if you look on the hill of there, you know there's not 40 pounds of pressure. So Jake did at that time, you know, propose a standalone system, along with myself numerous times. Every time we were told, no, it's not allowed in the city of Bonnie Lake. So, um, it is to say their proposal, the city of Bonnie Lake's building purpose was dirt the road, retap the main, write a two-inch line in there. We did that, still did not pass the flow test because of the water pressure. Fast forward a little bit. We talked about putting a pump in there with a backflow system. Once again, the city of the building department said, no, that's not allowed either. I had to be, uh, fire commissioner, I talked to him. He essentially said, he's, Pierce County said, Pierce County, if you don't care, it means the advance, once you get pressure. Uh, city of Bonnie Lake said, we don't care what the fire department says. Cost me about $25,000 to put the, uh, two-inch in, the standalone system about three. So, um, just want to reiterate what he said. That it made sense, you know? There's special circumstances below water pressure. We did it. Live on top of the hill, you live like that. But to jump through a million hoops, that's makes sense.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hoff. And I do agree with Councilmember Watson. When is the next community settlement?
Two weeks.
Two weeks? Okay.
I'd be more than happy to go on that too.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to thank you for coming forward and bringing this issue forward. I've been a council member for many years. I've heard some of the technical details that you guys have, obviously, behind this issue. But just kind of wondering globally, you know, a lot of these, um, like, I know a lot of the council members are much interested in the unnecessary regulations out there, right? To try to keep the burden. We want to keep the goal the same, the safety and what have you, but without unnecessary burdens.
Right, and I never opposed having sprinklers.
No, that's fine. But I'm just wondering, you know, from my information, it's kind of like, I hadn't heard about this issue before because yours is obviously, you know, and I'm thinking, if I'm a homeowner, I'm thinking, well, city's telling me to spend an extra $20,000. I'm going to be like, you know, contacting somebody. So is that, just, you know, for me to learn the process of, you know, did you think, well, I'm going to go talk to the mayor? Or did you go talk to the mayor and the mayor was like, yeah, get out of here or something? You know, not this previous one or whatever, right?
Very tough circumstances at the time I did attend a few council meetings. Uh, COVID hit, council meetings went away and...
Really? I got trapped in that loop, yeah. Well, just for, you know, just for public or what have you, you know? I know I'm always available. I'm on the CDC as Mr. Watson is, a couple other council members. Kelly McLean is up here currently.
At the time, I didn't think any of it. Should not have had it, had it be elevated to the council.
Right.
When you have a professional, if I lived three blocks away in Pierce County, it's allowed.
Exactly, yeah. Completely agree, yeah. So, but we're here for you guys, you know? Obviously, we work for you and not to be pushing. I'll my phone numbers, I'll be, you know? Because frankly, I didn't know about this issue. I'm kind of, I would be upset.
Yeah.
So hopefully, we'll get it fixed. It doesn't help your problem, but future people, thank you for bringing it up.
Can I say one more?
Yes, Mr. Hoff.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Just to reiterate, at the time, Jeff, I could have offered him a tank and a pump for three grand. If you didn't catch that, he spent 20 grand a day up the street with Miss Mark. Hit the main, wire shut off, and we locked it. Lived there next to each other. But I don't know if you all are aware, there's a house across the, across the highway from Chick-fil-A. Got a Comax box. Maybe most of you may know or have seen that. Well, these folks called me and they didn't have a lot of money, okay? And, and I think they told me that to retap the main and just get that line ended up in that cul-de-sac, it was going to cost me 20 grand at the time, okay? I could have given the same damn tank for three grand. So they could have had a system. Who knows, you know, I have no clue. But I was always told that tank pumps are not allowed. Standalone systems are not allowed. So just want, it's, it's, uh, it really needs to be, that handout really needs to be texted.
I have a question here. So, but the standalone tanks are allowed in other cities and also Pierce County, correct?
Yeah, we put them in all the time.
All over, all over Washington State, but Bonnie Lake, we have a problem.
Well, I mean, you can read the email requires and they're allowing them now. But that's why before the next handout gets granted, I'd like to have, I'd like to put eyes on it. Well, I know you have my number, Mr. Hoff.
I have one more question. On those, on those tanks, they have a flow ball, just like a evaporation or whatever, or a fortifier is, it fills it back up and...
Yep, so you make a couple different sized tanks. I like these tanks. I think that's me all when it comes to the tanks. Give you one, one tank's over a hundred gallons. So it doesn't require you to have water coming in at the top. It holds all, it's a lot bigger. People, you know, some people hate these tanks in their garage, but they figure some of their dimensions are on that cut sheet. But the part, if you do the, most people, excuse me, most people do the 350 gallon tank. And you can see on the cut sheet on the top, the bill's on the top and kind of comes through that float. And basically, as that thing's dumping, if there were a fire, you're getting enough water. The heads that we use require 26 gallons per minute. So Jeff's, uh, talking about Jeff's house where we live up on top of the hill here, the water pressure, it's not awesome at all. But this would have taken 20 grand, you know?
Is that your gap or is that?
That's an air gap.
Okay.
Yep, because you have the, the overflow on the back, there's a one-inch port.
Okay.
And I do apologize. I wish we could talk about, we have several subjects to cover and limit it in that time. I appreciate it, Mr. Hoff. If we can move to item B, streetlights. Oh, oh, Ricky Campbell, are you here? Okay.
So I'm here for this fire sprinkler issue as well. It seems like everybody's on the same page. I'm here just because more of an educational standpoint. I am a U.A. Local 699 representative, which is a labor union based out of Seattle, Washington, that works seven counties. Big Box is a current training agent for us, a signatory contractor for us. Both him and I have both completed a apprenticeship program based on fire protection solely. So we are very first in that field. I train our apprentices, our apprenticeship school. And I just, I kind of just want to reiterate, you know, these tank systems and standalone systems are rarely capable of handling the fire. And the passive purges, the network and the multipurpose systems were originally intended to keep the cost down, right? Because you didn't have to put a backflow preventer on there. You didn't have to have a shut-off valve on there. But these standalone tank systems, in my opinion, are the best systems out there. So I would give you guys my number and contact information if you want any help with code references or anything like that.
Absolutely. You can probably email the city. We will have that on the phone. Now, Mr. Johnson, did you have a comment or a question?
Just, just quickly, a couple comments. And it's kind of been hit on here already, but I didn't want to verging that was something that I'm not sure we even talked about. I talked with Jake Fox last week. I made the decision at that point that there was no reason why we can't accept both standalone and tank pumps. We will do that moving forward. The other thing to consider here is we do ask for a little bit of patience right now. The city of Bonnie Lake has just taken the review of fire sprinkler systems back over. Up until the month last year, this was done by East Pierce Fire and Rescue. And so while, while letters and emails may have gone out saying the city direction on sprinkler systems for years and what would be accepted came largely from East Pierce Fire and Rescue. And so I, well, I mean, Mr. Huff's situation is unbearably unfortunate. It's ridiculous that it had to go that far. It's not something that would happen again. And I do apologize that that happened at all. I went back and looked at emails and this happened right about the time I was appointed interim director. So I just want to throw that out there because this is something that we have changed. And we will accept those types of things.
The only commentary I have on that is the fact that even though the procedure's been changed, it's still on code, it's being codified. We would have to...
Those are elements that we have to address. Those are elements that we're happy to bring back, uh, revisions to CDC. Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Senator.
Thank you. The standalone system, I thought you said the audio there. Handout.
My perception of the code, when I was reading the code, it is acceptable. But this handout kind of limited...
The issue was the handout, not the code.
That's, that's, that's correct. And he's exactly right. Our code does not specify, like, the handout does, and that's wrong.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, Councilmember Ball.
Sorry, I know we don't have time, but I do, I, first of all, I just want to stress that I want to make sure the residents aren't able to talk. So I know that if we go to nine, I don't really, I don't want to put the pressure on them to try to rush. That's the first thing. I have brought this up before in regards to businesses coming to me and talking to me talking to me about issues with permitting and just coming up against a wall. And I guess my question then would be, you know, instead of just no's, because I just want to point out too that Jake Fox, he said specifically, yes, there is this code, but it's, it's other permitting issues in general. There's, there's, and so I think my question then would be, you know, maybe have a meeting or something to the effect to try to figure out, instead of just saying no, how do we get to yes for businesses? And so I just hate that they're having to fork out, you know, you had a fork out worth $25,000, but what if that was just a regular, you know, regular person without those funds? Well, you know, like, what does that really mean? But, you know, maybe there's somebody that is hardly has that. And I, and I did question, I had to, um, Dan, just... Is there, is there something, why we adopt the international fire code? I know you were telling me it's not necessarily, I mean, it's not something that has to be adopted, but it is. I guess I don't understand it very clearly. But yeah, I just don't think people have to go above and beyond. And so I, yeah, maybe there needs to be a meeting about how do we get to yes.
Oh, I believe we'll probably be there. I know that Mr. Johnson's well aware of that. It is a handout issue, I believe, we can fix it very quick. Or a lot quicker than I was expecting we'd be. Oh, any further?
I applaud the city of Bonnie Lake and this council for, you know, passing this fire sprinkler, you know, law and life safety.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, now we move to item B, which will be streetlights. Madam Clerk, could you read the topic?
The second discussion is the amount of streetlights that are out and getting those pictures.
Do we have anybody present who would like to discuss this matter? What, Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Watson?
Obviously, I got a comment. I do have several citizens that email me and actually have, one has my text number. He walks dog all the time. And then other people, they walk their animals too. And they do contact me and I do help with the city and B G N E, people likes taken care of. It's a very simple process and we have access to that too. So I'm sorry, some people have run into problems with the lights, but B G N E takes care of that for us. And, yes, anyway. I'll always be there. Anyway, let your company, David, normally pretty efficient. And Brian knows I've talked to him about this before. I hope you'll, I'll act your council members for Tom Watson.
Thank you, Councilmember Watson. Next speaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan Decker, 1217 Street, East Bonnie Lake, Washington. I just want to say that in my neighborhood, the streetlights are inadequate. But overall, I've seen the streetlights, they seem to be flashing outward and downward, but also upward. And I would like to see the streetlights not flashing upward. And there is a method to fix that problem. I say that because I've been around the city for well over 60 years, longer than other people that live here in the city and are alive. And I've watched the city far below. And I don't mind so much that it's glowing, but it's taking away our heaven. What I mean by that is, when you look up into the sky, we're not seeing stars like we did 40 years ago or 50 years ago. And that's an important thing to look at because that is where we came from. And I don't necessarily mean we're aliens, but some people think I am. But that's okay because I just do what I can. But anyway, that's what I'm hoping we can do is get the light to fall down. I know a lot of the stoners appreciate what I just, thank you very much, council.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, yes.
Mr. Johnson's comments on that, I want to reiterate with Councilmember Watson that we do have a process in place for any lights that are out. They can contact me. Then you can send me those lights you're talking about. I'd be happy to look at that for you. But we do have a process that the public works. Most of the streetlights in the city of Bonnie Lake are actually owned by Future Sound Energy. If residents have a problem, please let us know. We have a contract for maintenance with P S E slash Injulight. I'm not assuring you what their relationship is. And they are contracted to come out and fix those lights. Typically, their turnaround time that they quoted us is three days. However, I think that COVID and supply chain stuff, that is dragging way out, like it's used to be for everything. But please do let us know. We are happy to make sure that they get on that and that air in Bonnie Lake. And we do also, just as I along with what Dan was saying, our current standard is that we require, require all lighting. Bonnie Lake, we are compliant. We are leaving that in consideration with our lights. So if you have some kind of malfunction or something's failing or it's turned around or not adjusted, right? You got my email.
Thank you, Director Ryan Thompson.
Do we have any further commentary on that? Okay, let's move to item D, the affordable housing apartments. Madam Clerk, could you read the issue?
The next item of discussion is on whether Bonnie Lake will have more affordable housing or apartments?
Do we have anybody present to discuss that, Matt? Okay, we can move to item... Oh, sorry. Decker!
I told you what I was saying earlier. It's getting me over. Okay, Dan Decker, 1217 Street.
Let the record note that we have Decker's name and address fully on there. Several records.
Affordable housing. I remember a while back about, oh, 50, 60 years ago, my dad and I rebuilt a house in the city of Bonnie Lake. It cost about $4,000. Today, that house is selling for a little over $450,000. Affordable housing. Well, at that time, a person's, the average person's wage was anywhere from $1.50 to $2 an hour. That was the average wage. That was not minimum wage. Minimum wage are right about 95, 75 and 95 cents. Affordable housing. I believe houses come along at the rate of what inflation is. And oh, by the way, the permit, the deal of that house, probably $20. Today, it's what, 30,000, 35? But then again, not minimum wage, but the average wage in, let's say, Seattle is right about 75 to $100,000 a year. And so affordable housing is really, what is it? It's the cost of inflation. And that's basically what it is. And I believe from what I've seen, and I've been out on the street looking at homeless people don't care. They don't want a home. They want drugs. They want the freedom and independence to turn the area they live into a garbage can. Go look at where they live. Their tent, those tent communities. Fact is, I think that part of the homeless community is right out here in our parking lot. I get out of my car, the first thing I look down, I see a bunch of syringes. What were in those syringes? I hope they were diabetics. That would be, that would make me happy. I'm sad that they'd be diabetic, but happy is not a heroin addict throwing his syringe away. And that's what I see in our parking lot right here in the city of Bonnie Lake. Uh, I guess, I guess I'm saying that affordable housing are only affordable if you want them. And oh, because look at the price. Everything is expensive, including our wages. We get a lot of money. I mean, the council, for example, every person on the council makes a fairly decent wage. Every person on the council is here because they want to be, because they work hard for the city. I appreciate that. And so do the people I think of Bonnie Lake. Oh, sometimes you do make things out of money. I want them to get away with everything, you know, where I'd say. So the point is, point is that affordable houses are only what you make them to be. And that's all there is. It's inflation takes care of the rest. $35,000 for a permit versus $20, 60 years ago. Hey, I can go out and build a house and call it affordable because it's half of what contracts you would yield it for, but a homeless person couldn't afford. And there you go. And I'd be lucky if I could afford it after I built it. But anyway, thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr.
Hi, my name is Shonton Mulligan. He's near the Bonnie Lake Community Center. And on the issue of affordable housing, I, that, that's a great issue. My primary issue is how the state is trying to fundamentally change the composition of communities through pushing affordable housing into different areas. And so the concept of the state changing our communities, I'd really like you guys to have your antennas up on understanding that affordable housing is really a key word. We're going to change your demographic. That's what it is. Um, I really, I want to see families move into Bonnie Lake and we can free them from the idea of leasing. There are certain companies that it is their business to indenture people to pay for the rest of their lives and never own something. Okay? That is their business. And it is very much my concern that those businesses are influencing the state through lobbyists to change the Growth Management Act, to change our communities. And these people, you know, I mean, I grew up in a garden. I have nothing against the rental mentality, but to be able to own something, for that opportunity to own something is, it's very important. So please be aware of the pressure that the Growth Management Act is trying to make affordable housing in communities and how large companies have a vested interest, right? Because they, they permanently profit from these giant apartment buildings. And when my cousin and I, when we were fixing up, we were rehabbing a home that, um, that was just a horrible drug house. Uh, when we were doing that situation, we looked, can we live, can we sell our home and then live in one of these apartments, right? That's what we'll do. We'll flip this house. We don't have to live in mom and dad's basement. We could not afford it. We could not afford to live in one of these apartments. So they are lovely. I'm not saying anything about them, but they are not affordable. And so we did end up in mom and dad's basement. Yeah, for like 18 months. They're safe, correct? But, but that's the real deal. It's not affordable. So we need to be aware of when these big companies say, oh, I'm going to build 600 units and then affordable housing unit. It's no. Lights, lights on. Be aware, please. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Johnson.
Okay. Oh, yes.
Hi, I'm Michelle Deportograph, 7720 Third Avenue East. I feel uniquely qualified. Yes?
Thank you.
Michelle Deportograph, 7720 210th Avenue East. Thanks for letting me wear my mask. I don't want to expose it. Um, it is yours. Thank you. I feel uniquely qualified to talk about that. And I wasn't even, this, I wasn't even going to talk about this today. But, um, affordable housing in Bonnie Lake really is necessary. And I think conflating drug use, conflating homelessness, conflating crime with affordable housing, whether that is multifamily housing or affordable single-family housing, is a very dangerous avenue to go down. For example, my mother-in-law's relocating to the area and she's 71 years old. She is on social security. She is active, but I don't feel like she should have to try to find a $20 an hour, 40 hour a week job to be able to have a little place for herself. And my husband and I committed to try to help her find somewhere. And anywhere on the plateau, we couldn't find a falling apart 30-year-old townhouse for under $350,000 a year. And that seems so unreasonable to me. When we moved here a few years ago, we sold our house in Oklahoma for half the price that we purchased our house here in Bonnie Lake and same size house. And if we were moving to Bonnie Lake today, we are a two-income family with no children, and we wouldn't be able to afford our house because we paid $449,000 for our house two years ago. And this week, a house, three houses down from us, sold for $700,000, and it's the same size as our house. So I can tell you that we have a nest egg. We are very comfortable. We have two full incomes, and we couldn't afford to live here. So to suggest that there is some way that young families can move into the area without there being some kind of affordable housing for them is really unrealistic. I don't see how it's ever going to happen. And it, it shouldn't be about changing the demographic for any other reason than everyone deserves to be able to afford a place to live. So if there is multifamily housing coming in, maybe it needs to be the income restricted housing like the views, which still are extremely expensive. We ended up spending $150,000 to buy into a co-op for a 600 square foot apartment for my mother-in-law. And that's down the hill in Qella. We literally looked at three mobile homes, I think, that were all priced at least $100,000. They were all 40 years old, and the lot rent on each of them was 600 a month or more. So I, I can't see how we're going to be able to do anything collectively as a community unless we're able to provide housing for the people that we expect to be able to work here. I don't see why anybody would take a bus from Qella or something to come up the hill and work at McDonald's because they can't afford an apartment here. We need to be able to have housing that fits the demographics of the people that are here, that are working here, that are working in service industries because we all benefit from service industries. And I think that's really an important thing that needs to be considered as moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, um, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Decker, but this isn't, this is a town hall as opposed to a debate. If you wish to comment, uh, yeah, we can. Thank you. All right. Item D would be homeless in parking lots. Madam Clerk, could you read the topic?
The first item, um, discussion that was not on the agenda is on homeless.
Okay, okay.
That are living in vans and buses in the past fitness and Walmart parking lots. People feel that this is contributing to a rise in robberies among local businesses and property.
In, in your statement? Yes.
Hey, everyone. My name is Kurt Dunn. I live at 93, 302 Angeline Road. Just had, just, just a concern. Feels like I've born and raised Bonnie Lake, you know, 1982. My grandparents, my family evolved from Bonnie Lake, and I love this place. And I've kind of seen it in the last couple of years. Drugs get real bad. And it seems like, you know, I don't know if it's the funding with police or whatnot, but it just, it feels like, you know, the police are, have their hands tied and on the Bonnie Lake community page on, on Facebook or wherever, everybody's just getting fed up with all the crime and the drugs. And where, where we live is right where they built the New Nature Trail and the staircase. I puzzled a litter about that in the past, never got a response or anything to my concern. And I just, Angeline Road is, I got a couple of issues. Angeline Road is a, a speed trap. And I'd hate to see, you know, young kids or myself or my wife, my four-year-old daughter, you know, someone crossing from the, uh, the new staircase across the street to the nature trail and possibly get hit coming around the line for them. And not to mention all the drug addicts and stuff that just kind of come around and linger around. And I feel bad. I got friends that own businesses in Bonnie Lake. We have some planet fitness. They were robbed, uh, not too long ago. This dope shop there. Everybody's just real concerned that we got these, these vehicles parked here, and it just seems like nobody's doing anything. I wish we could use something.
And may I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, when you say vehicles that are, uh, that are parked here, that'd be vehicles that were filled with the, the question would be what you were talking about in the parking lot?
Yes, sir. There's like a bus van that's been there for like months and it's like one. And it's pretty, I mean, you got truck drivers that come in there and they'll take a nap for a night or something. Kind of less understandable. But you got some nice RVs that are there for a day or two or whatever. But there's just people that just live there and then they walk down. And in my location, where, where I'm at, it's, it's like a hub for everybody. I've been my own police officer for a while. You know, it's, it's tough and it's, I, it's nice. Uh, my wife gets me kind of, you know, involved with the Facebook stuff and lets me know all the goings-ons around Bonnie Lake and everything like that. It's nice to know that other people have the same concern inside you about the crime and safety and stuff like that. I don't know. Is it lack of police officers or they're just got different things to take care of? But I don't know. So I guess my concerns are the crime and the speed going on Angeline Road.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, um.
Again, Decker, 1201 Seventh Street, Bonnie Lake, Washington. Mark Masterplan, I have a question on that subject.
Well, when we get to that subject.
Okay.
We, we are still talking about homeless and parking.
We're talking about homeless.
It's not, it's not obvious.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, I did see that. You, you mentioned that.
We're still in discussion.
Excuse me, I thought we changed subjects. Well, since I've already spoken, there's no sport. I wasn't allowed to, even though that would be charitable because a lot of others do speak twice. I'm waiting for my turn on here.
Mr. Mayor? Uh, yes, Councilmember.
I have a comment about the homeless people in the parking lots and the streets. Angeline has always been a challenge for us. Been has over 10 years. Get the officers down to slow them down. That is a serious issue. And Mr. Evans lives down that road himself. He knows the challenges it faces too. Um, trying to have it 25 because of all the rules that open that roadway, can increase the speed to 35. If you do that, there you go, 45 is a problem. A lot of people have walked down that road. I've driven it numerous times. I don't know what we can else can do about it, but, and we've put patrol officers down there and taken my credit and slowed them down. But that road is a challenge. And you can't proceed to these, you can't just keep them standing there. We've had them one focused before and they caused problems. And the other thought about parking lots, Walmart's had, used to have a problem with that, with people parking the road like the newer space. And they work closely with the police department, be able to move those vehicles how Walmart does to them. A lot of those parking lots, they're all part of property. There's not much to leave that, to do about it, the property, unless the landlord works with the city itself. So it's a two-handed function. Help, help us get them out of there and then make sure the police have authority. There's a special form we have put together for like a Walmart and the one, that, that they have the authority to go on their parking, parking and make the, the rest of whatever they might have. So that's, some of the retail stores don't do that. But there was like Walmart, that was, you do that. So it needs two-handed work together to help move those problems apart. I know it's usually more diligently when you're trying to solve that problem. Obviously, we need to address.
Okay. Uh, and Councilmember Ball?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I totally agree with you. Um, and as a resident, I have looked into the same things as well. Um, I will tell you that, uh, our Bonnie Lake City Police Department, they just, they do, they do so much to try to combat what we're fighting actually up in the legislature. So, um, I know that if you'd like to, I'd be happy to explain to you further about what some of those challenges are because it really does require the people to go to contact legislators down in Olympia. That, you are absolutely right. Their hands are tied. Um, there's some things even, um, as far as when I was looking into it, it seems like there are also some issues with trying to book people into certain jails. Um, and, and it's due to ridiculous COVID restrictions as far as why they won't book somebody in unless they have violently committed a crime. And so those people then get released right back into the street, um, doing the same thing that they were doing before. And so that is actually the problem. Um, I would suggest maybe even, and again, I am happy to tell you more about this, um, but, you know, looking further into who else you could contact because as a city, our hands are indeed tied. Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Evans? Uh, I could just dig to that a little bit.
Yes.
You are absolutely correct. For the longest time during COVID, county is where we typically take them to. And I have been in contact with the sheriff, and he has loosened up just very, very recently. and he has loosened up just very, very recently some of the booking restrictions. But like Councilmember Baldwin was saying, the legislature passed some laws, some really ridiculous laws a couple of years ago, stating that known possession or not knowing possession means that our officers can't necessarily book for small amounts of amphetamines or anything.
That was the case law.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And so Bonnie Lake, actually, I think we were the first or second in the state to pass a paraphernalia law that says if you get pulled over and you have a crack pipe with you in crack, well, the county's not going to prosecute you on the crack, but we can prosecute you on the crack pipe as a gross misdemeanor. So the city has been trying to do what they can to be more aggressive than what the state is allowing, what the county is allowing. So it's something that I know chief, our officers work diligently out there, and it's not underfunding. I think we're one of the few that are publicly staffed.
So last week.
But that's due to retirement, from longevity, if people want it. You know, we don't have to have these super particular signing bonuses because people want to come work for us. City staff is a great place to work for for a long. So that, and I know our officers are out there being very diligent, trying to do what they can within the, along within some of the regulations that the state has passed. I know it's frustrating, and you're welcome to come to a public safety meeting. We'd love to talk with you more about that, or you can get our card, so we can chat offline on that. It is something that we're well aware of and trying to do the best that we can while we're trying to pick those locks a bit from having our hands tied.
Okay, Debbie, Debbie, your part?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, as a police officer as well, where I work in a different jurisdiction, and we're about 70% staff, whereas here, we're probably 50% staff. That is all because they want to come look here, this administration, this police department. They are working hard, and they're fully supported by us. Even you're fully supportive of them. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. They are trying to do what they can. The legislature has absolutely tied the hands of police department, officers, prosecutors. And you should all be contacting our legislature. Get that changed. They changed a couple of things back recently. That's, it's still stuff coming back, but it's not enough.
Absolutely.
Yes, Chief Keeter?
Can I say something real quick? I have only a half hour here, but I wanted to talk about the big gray elephant in the parking lot. I've been trying to get rid of that for months. It is on private property. We're closely with the management there. They've tried to tow it out at different times, as you can imagine. It's very expensive. It's on the management company. Believe it or not, when we knock on the door, a lot of times people don't answer. And so the tow companies will not tow it unless they're sure nobody's inside. We've been playing this cat and mouse game, and just today, we had our two community service officers make contact with somebody. Found out that it is a natural gas bus that runs on natural gas that is out of natural gas. There is, I'm sorry, propane. There's no way, if nobody has a mobile propane tank to fill it up, so it would have to get towed. The two nearest places to us in the state, one is, one is. So I would imagine the tow bill to tow the bus down there is upwards of $1,000. So we're working with the management company to see if they're willing to do that. If not, we're working with other areas to get it towed. If this person, the person that lives in it has a traumatic brain injury, so that's basically his house, and that's where he ran out of propane. So we are, we've been trying to deal with it for months and hoping that we've got a little bit of traction on that. But we do have a great relationship with all of our businesses. CSOs are, we, this officer worked really hard to get these trespass agreements with our businesses to allow us to enforce laws when they're not there. So I wanted to mention that, that we are working on that. Same with Walmart, as Councilmember Watson said, that they've been fantastic. We do have people there overnight, and we don't get the long-term members. They won't have it. Very, very good on that. So our officers and our CSOs, they're quite a bit. And as far as the other councilmembers said, yes, we are frustrated. I would say that the increase in crime has been because of legislation and because of jail restrictions. Those two things have really hammered our efforts. Since they've been releasing those, the restrictions on the jail, our officers, we are full up. We're to the point now where we can't book because the jails are full again. Because we have a four-bed contract with Enham Claw Jail. That's where we, our primary booking, our backup is Qiala. Our third is Pierce County, and our last resort is Score in Buren. So the other night, we didn't have anywhere to book except for Score, because all the others were done normally at the end. So I want, you know, the officers are working. They, a lot of them live here. And if, we have, Debbie, your card is right. The officers do want to work here because of the, because of the council. Fantastic place to work. And as I'm sitting up here and conversing with a renting officer who wants to come work for Bonnie Lake, so I'm working the phones up here on the telephone, trying to get us back to work. But I'd be happy to talk to you offline and then just give you a quick anecdote of our frustration. We had a string of commercial burglaries probably a month and a half ago. Where five of our businesses on 410 smashed and grabbed. The alarms go off, we're right behind. Set behind on everyone because of the delay. Last one is about 1:30, the Little Martini Bar, not able to catch the person. And it turns out that he gave a whole lot, maybe some loose change and odds and ends. Whole police department, four hours later, same exact thing, smash and grab. Fortunately, they're able to nab this person. Our detective, at 6:00 in the morning, was smart enough to look and see that, hey, that's the person from our smash and grabs. We went, tried to arrest him, jail would not take him. He did six commercial burglaries that night and didn't go to jail because of COVID. So they let him out, and, you know, we're frustrated too. So we're doing what we can. But yeah, there's a lot of things that are against COVID. Sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to take a lot. So I would be happy to talk to you.
I actually have an intended to what you're saying, because I have to address honestly. The frustration that Chief Keeter shares, we have actually spoken with Representative Schreier, our federal representative, about this problem that Chief Keeter did. I did it independently. My particular concern was with what House Member Watson brought up, and that'd be the cooperation of our commercial officials, especially the giant retailers who are right now not particularly cooperating with prosecutions that go on from the arrests. And so we've made everybody aware of this problem. And I believe that it is turning the corner, that because the jails are becoming full. But we, I think we've reemphasized, we are on top of the problem and trying to make everybody aware. So in moving on, I believe that we have 20 minutes. I have on my agenda water bills. Those are the next, okay. All right, Matt, could you read the particular issue?
Another submission that we had to see was the water bills and what is being done about how high they are.
Okay, do we have anybody who wishes to address that section? Oh, okay. We have a survey, what about, I'd say, that would be coming back. I'm not sure when, that's a queue.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I need to get on the microphone here, mother. We already said, currently, it should be coming back somewhat soon. Should be able to forward with looking at the rates as far as what we can do to bring them down, hopefully. That's what everybody wants to do, because obviously it's an issue. But we're kind of waiting right now on the rate study. So that's coming up. No, I was, how to go, so I think that's a six piece. So yes, we are well aware of it, and we're trying to. Item F would be crime. I believe we probably covered it.
Yes, I do have.
Okay, Matt, first?
Another submission we had was, sorry, I'm having to read this. How will we help? Already did that one. The people's elected representatives must not be subverted, so talking about executive power abuses and not wanting politics?
Would that be concerning the city itself, or?
I believe so. Shanta?
I think you guys work great together. You know my address. I just wanted to make sure, since it's a town hall, right, just continue working together and making left hand knows what right hand is doing and cooperate as you're doing. Just abusive executive power is really damaging to people's respect for authority. And when we undercut people's respect for authority, we put our fine-cutted women in lieu in danger as well as all of our business. So make sure that that gets understood. Thanks.
All right, Dave?
The rest of the room.
I'm sorry?
The rest of the room.
Oh, okay.
There are.
Well, we've come to the end of that list, so. Oh, we did? Okay.
Yeah.
The next one is public communication, mostly on the website.
Well, if they are all this spoken, why don't we read all the issues?
Okay, I didn't grab or check it. Oh, there's a, there's me. So public communication, there's one item on this. The website I deal is painfully slow. It's painfully slow from multiple places. I try to access it, and I've called before that, you know, can you add this to your tech request? Please make it faster or optimize it somehow. And I was told, well, it's just your internet connection. I went, no, 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 not my internet connection. So yeah, if there can be something, I know, I know technology's expensive, and you guys are really great at watching the pennies. But I really believe that you would get more public involvement with a website that is more accessible. I had to look for where I needed to insert comments for the town hall meeting, and I was told about it. And I'm like searching on the website, like, where do I put my comments? And I can't, I couldn't find it. It was hard, okay? First world hard. Okay, just want to say it, first world hard. And it's glitchy and it's not optimized for mobile use, right? So if somebody is on the go, right, which we all have busy lives and we want to sustain our community because we all love it so much, it's not optimized for on-go. And then I believe that it's in need of human factors and content management overhaul, right? There's just, there's so much there. It's have someone look at the information and optimize it for both employees internally, because I'm sure employees use it as well to access things, right, and the public. I think that would really be a service to everyone. Also, on the public communication, I know lots of people who would like to be more involved, and they really feel burdened to be responsible with the things that they have been given. And to be able to speak with all of you who serve us so well is important to them. So maybe if there could be some brainstorming about trying, I know this is something, you know, a long time ago, we talked about like how, there's like frustration trying to figure out how do you get citizens more involved? And so we can just continue figuring that out, like maybe a sign board when there's a town hall meeting. I don't know if we have a female one from years ago, but, or we write one, whatever, to, you know, everyone comes up that 410 hill, and Little League can, well, not answer. Anyway, just a brainstorm, different ideas, you know, to get help and be involved. So maximize citizen participation, maybe help coordinate, you know, get in contact with the home association president. We have so many home associations. So maybe we can get the home association presidents online, and they can do a blast. We can use some sort of a public blast where those Facebook groups of the home associations get notification of meetings. Anyway, thank you very much. Yes.
We did have a spot in the top tail on 410, Franklin Road Drive. They don't have it right here. We put it in there for a week or more. We didn't approve it a couple of years ago because it wasn't finding the budget. So somebody can find the money for it. We'll put one there for you. So that's all ready to go.
And that's another, that's another, I know, I know you do, and I know you're watching. So, thank you.
We're going to kick you back off your website, Dave. Absolutely. It's not user-friendly. I've complained about it a lot. Mobile is horrible, and we still use watermark stuff from Google Image Search rather than actual images from our amazing beautiful cities. So yeah, it's frustrating to have a world-class city and an angel fire website.
I will talk about that. I actually know where.
Ben would let me edit for it.
I can't hear you, Sadie.
Sorry. I was making sense that I was by myself for several months, so I did not have to work on the website. And now I've got two wonderful assistants who are helping me, so it is slowly getting worked on. And I'm hoping updated with fresh pictures, and I will try and work on the technical parts. It's with the device, and it's on their end, and I've put in several requests. So I will continue to try and work on that. And I know it does get slow when we are editing, because there's several that are editing at once.
And our IT manager knew that you were on the web.
I'm not scared.
Okay, Councilmember Baldwin?
I'm sorry. That's hilarious. Yeah, well, Shanta, as you know, I have a very strong desire to make sure that people know what's going on and that they're a part of it, because all of you guys really need to know this is your space. You need to not feel intimidating or weird or strange. I will say that I have been in conversations with John Otavich, and we've just been trying to figure out, we used to have, we're just brainstorming, but read aboard options. We do think at the top of the hill. I know not everybody goes up that hill. No, a lot of people do. And, you know, in going up that hill, having something that is broadcast out there. I think the HOA idea is a great idea. I know sometimes it's hard to reach people, but I think on the website, it's not just in the way that it's working, but it's the way that things are worded. The wording is very intimidating. It's not very inviting. It's not very fun. And it should be. So I have been researching just other verbiage that other cities are using that have, you know, that friendly feeling. But I will even add, and I have, yeah, I will even add that entering this building on Tuesdays is uncomfortable because we have a metal detector there. The sign is right there, and it says to wait for the bailiff. I moved that sign. And yeah, I just want it to be a little bit more, maybe some signs to, so that people know that they're welcome and also to communicate with people that they can come in and out as they would like. I think sometimes people feel like once they commit to being inside this chamber, they're stuck. And you're not, you're actually not stuck. You can go get a hamburger and then come back if you want to. So yeah, that's all I have.
Well, and I'd like to add. And like the process had been changed, and the website said one thing, and I was informed of another thing here. And so there, I mean, I know we're all moving at the speed of awesome. That's, you know, the rate that we live at now. But attention to the wording, the, so, thanks.
All right, thank you. I guess for a poll, you have.
I was just going to add also, I wanted to just piggyback on that, was also being able to accept payments online as well. I know that was an issue as far as Little League and things like that go, but it's kind of all tied into recreation.
Are we, are we on to the next item? Okay, one, I don't want to be hot. My last one was just fiscal responsibility, and I had already, you know, said my thank yous. But I guess one of the things just to think about and remind you of is I feel like the state oftentimes offers money or offers a study to do something. And it's sort of like our student company saying, hey, you study my drug, and, you know, we'll pay for the findings, you know? I mean, it's really, it yields as a citizen to me very. I mean, it's really, it yields as a citizen to me very deeply, right? So I just want to say, please, please make sure the state offers, you know, offers things that you just do a consideration. What is the end goal of the state? Is that going to serve our citizens? Or is it really just setting up kind of a conflict of interest? We're being paid by the people who are going to force us to implement something. And I, you know, I think about what you guys did on the traffic circle a while back was just, it's laudable. Like, I just applaud you because I know that's a really tough decision. But I drive through that intersection all the time, and I feel, I think a traffic circle would be so unsafe. But it's really, really unsafe. So that's just my, my fiscal responsibility thing. And then I was going to ask about water and sewer, but I already covered it. So, thank you.
Okay. Oh, yes, thank you. Going back to the signage issue, I thought we had a trailer one point that signage type stuff on. Is that gone? I think I heard it might be gone.
We have a variable message, kind of easier question, like one of the washout, you know, yellow, red text, orange trailer thing. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
And we do have one.
Okay, just one.
Thank you.
All right, we have 10 minutes, and so we can start on Park's master plan. We have any discussion on the Park's master plan? Please, Mr. Deckard, if you want to address that? Yeah?
Mayor of council, I'm Dan Deckard, 217 Street, East Viney Lake, Washington. I want to say that East Taps Highway, West Taps Highway, Viney Lake Boulevard needs to be really addressed as far as the master plan of Park. I saw, in the summertime, instead of going up Church Lake Drive and then Taps Highway, taking a left or a right, I think real hard about that. I turn around, go down the Church Lake Drive and go through the Van Damme Road and get onto the 214, and actually the 218, which is intended as 214. And then go down the Kelly Lake Road, go back onto the Church Lake Road, and onto Kelly Lake Road either way to get into town. Because there's a 10, 15, 20, 30, who knows how long this is going to be for that long line. Or it's through that little narrow spot there. I understand it's at 20 miles an hour, and we need to get that fixed somehow. And I'm hoping that that's part of the master plan. And I've heard say that we're going to take the Taps Highway and move it. Where are we going to move it to? We're going to build a bridge alongside of the lake and put it up there into the lake. That will work. Are we going to put it through the swamp? I don't know. But there, there are a couple of directions that can go, but it's a long way. It would erode the fact that we have a town up to the park. Because there are, I believe, four houses along the Taps Highway just before we get to the park, just on the north side, south, excuse me, south side of the Church Lake Drive. But, hey, that area needs to be addressed very shortly, and I hope so. And thank you very much, council.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, uh. Councilmember Baldwin, so this is for quite a while. I was wondering, do we have anything, I just want to talk about something that we haven't discussed yet. I know it's a town hall, and we'd want to hear from them too. And we're out of time, and Mr. Deckard has very well covered his concerns, but any others want to talk to us about something? We haven't covered? They're important to us, so if not, we can continue. Hey, do I want to say something?
Next, yes.
Steve Gibson. Also, I'm running a wrench HOA. I just want to thank group for helping us remove a painting car that was there for four months. Oh, thanks.
It's okay. Okay, I believe we have time for, does anybody, we had discussion on park funding. Does anybody have a comment or a discussion on park funding? And this is. Oh, Councilmember Baldwin, I am so sorry I'm asking this way.
Well, I, I think, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I would poll the citizens who are present to see how many would consider, whether it'd be wise or not to ask the citizens if they want to pass a very specific bond to complete the park projects that we desperately need at Midtown and Allen York?
I don't think it's inappropriate to take a survey on, on, such as you are in town hall. Uh, yes, actually, no, well.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, because sometimes it's some, you know, people may not even know what we're talking about. So we are going to be going to a retreat coming up, and that was kind of the purpose of the town hall, is we're trying to figure out what some major issues are that residents have that we can then kind of, you know, wrestle with in a longer period of time. We do have a potential of a park that we've wanted, and it's called Fred Meyer. It's, it's those woods that maybe you may not want to go in. And so we have been talking and thinking about a potential park back there. You know, and so we're interested even in ideas that you might have, whether it's parks that you want to. I know that we did at home, like, there is a plan, right? Right, there's a plan there? Yeah. And so I would highly recommend going on. I know our, it is complicated, but the plan is there, and taking a look at it, because it is something we're going to consider. And so I also want to say that Councilmember McLeibnens is wanting to do a bond rather than any other way because it is harder to get a bond approved. It requires a higher voter approval, just so you know. And so Kelly is proposing something that really would be, yeah, I would.
And Councilmember, if I could just piggyback off that. It would be similar to a park bond, or, I'm sorry, a pool bond or a flyer bond. Same, same type of scenario. It would be a portion of property tax that would be set specifically aside for park capital improvement. It would go to the vote of people, it's, I believe, a 60% for, for bonds that. It's not a 50 plus one. So it is harder to get, but the reason Councilmember McLeibnens wants to discuss something like that is if it's harder to get and we get it, and that means that is what the will of the people want. That's ultimately what we're here to do, is the will of the people. So that's, that's one of the park funding options. There's a couple of other ones where it's a potential B and O tax, a business and operation tax on businesses of upwards of 0.2%. That could, the benefit of that would be, that would be paid through a sales tax. So not everyone that is, a majority of that would be funded by people that just shop here and doesn't, and don't necessarily live here. So where a, a, a bond voted the people would be 100% the 21,000 citizens that live within the city of Bonnie Lake on their property tax. Or a potential B and O tax, which wouldn't be a vote of the people. It would be a, a business and operation tax, which would be paid for by anyone and everyone that shops in here. So the Holly, Enham Clough, Buckley, Sumner, Puyallup, all of those would be contributing to that also because they would be the ones that would be using those parks at some point as well through multi-use fields and team sports and things like that. Did I explain that well enough, Councilmember McLeibnens? Uh, we can't hear you, you're on mute.
Thank you so much. Yeah, that's essentially the point, is that it's, it's important that the, the citizens of Bonnie Lake get an opportunity to express whether or not dollars to build a park. Parks are expensive, they're hard to build. They're, they're important, but they cost money, and we don't print money in Bonnie Lake. We, we take it from you in the form of taxes. And I'd much rather have you say, here, take my money, than me say, oh, I'm going to take your money. So, I don't, did I get that? Was that clear?
Yes.
That was great. Yeah, that was very clear.
And it is 9 o'clock.
It is 9 o'clock. But I know Mr. Deckard, oh, okay. And just an informal survey. In the, in us putting on the ballot, it would be to have a bond, that would be park funding. That way we can, and this is just a preliminary thing, because as Councilmember Baldwin stated, we are going to have a retreat in, in roughly a month where we can discuss the issue further. Okay.
Put it on the ballot for yes, for the ballot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, very good. Oh, yes, we do have a. Six. And that would, that would be something that we could discuss at the, at the retreat. We don't have any specifics right now. It's just basically a general idea as to what the citizens want. So absolutely, and it will be a full discussion so that it won't be anything that we're hiding or anything along those lines. Oh, go ahead.
It, it comes down to what the size of the projects are going to be. If we're going to just put a playground here and a playground there and a parking lot, you know, it's going to be a really small bond. If we're doing an aquatic center or a multi-purpose field for tournaments, soccer, all of this, and, you know, it's, it's going to go up from there. So similar to a fire bond when they went out for their 200 million, which is way, 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 way out of reach for what we're talking about. But, you know, they, they put together seven renovations, two new, two new stations, a bunch of new rigs, all that kind of stuff. So it comes down to what the scope is proportionally broken out to what the bond would be.
And, and just for, for clarity, Councilmember Reddins did do a survey, and we were looking at roughly 54, 55.
That was what our, that was what I said. It was our comprehensive plan, sure.
Right.
I'm sorry, if we're going to continue, we do have to take a vote.
Okay. Yes, I'm, I do move to adjourn the meeting. Okay, I can use my gavel. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
For showing up.